Welcome to the April 25th, 2013 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Wayne Spanix, Pastor of Spring Hill Baptist Church. Would you please stand?
Would you join with me as we pray? Fathers, we gather this evening to consider the needs of our community. We're reminded of those whose needs seem to overshadow our own today. We lift up our friends in West Texas. Father, pray your blessing upon them as they rebuild, as they struggle, Father, with the loss of so many loved ones and property and family. We just pray your blessing upon those who live in Boston today. Father, pray you might just strengthen them as well. We thank you for the blessings that we enjoy living in this community, Father. We pray that you might guide our leaders as they consider the needs of our community. Give them wisdom and grace as they exercise justice in this community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you join with me in our pledge to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we have citizen comment tonight. First card is from Ms. Rhonda Bullard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Rhonda Bullard, and I'm here this afternoon in front of you representing the Board of Directors for Longview World of Wonders, which today we announced downtown the purchase of the former Texas Furniture Building where we will be opening in early 2014, a hands-on Discovery Science Center for Children. Several of you were there today, and we appreciate you being there very much. Mr. Smith, I again apologize for mispronouncing, misstating your last name, but we are very appreciative of the support of the city council and any of you that were not able to attend and would like information, we certainly have that for you. Longview, I was very excited about opening a cutting-edge, highly-interactive, hands-on children's center in downtown. Eleven thousand square feet of this building will be built out in very interactive, hands-on exploration creativity for young children up through the age of seventh grade. The hub of cultural activities in downtown is already stellar, and we're very proud of that. Adding a children's learning environment will really make downtown Longview a destination. Based on studies run by the Association of Children's Museums, comparing cities of our geographic and demographic size, we expect to have about seven to eight thousand children come through our facility in any given year. We're addressing the council today to make you aware of our project, but to also ask your assistance as you study future downtown traffic needs. We are aware that Councilman Frost has in the past championed the concept of a city shuttle to move people that work in downtown, may visit our restaurants, shop in our stores, and now visit our children's museum along with Longview Museum and Arts and Gray County Historical Museum to shuttle these people to our public parking areas because downtown parking has become such an issue. And we're thrilled that it's an issue. We can remember a time several years ago that we could have shot a cannon through the middle of downtown and not hit anybody, and now it's just a hub of activity which is wonderful for our city. Our joining downtown is going to create that parking, you know, to be even a greater task to overcome. And in talking to KSA Network Partners in Prevention, Willie G's, KLTV, Osaka, Shag Hair Salon, they all agree with us that we need to look at future needs for parking and moving people around in downtown. The people from KSA shared with us that when their employees get ready to leave in the afternoon, they personally shuttle their employees in private vehicles, personal vehicles, back to the parking lots because they can't cross where the train is. And when I came here today at five o'clock, the train was stuck on the tracks. So you had to go down to either High Street or even Green Street, which is not open currently, but that will be a wonderful asset for us when that underpass is finished because when those buses come to drop children off, they won't get stuck. So we have the support of our downtown partners in addressing this issue. We appreciate Councilman Frost already having the forward thinking of this needing to be taken care of, and we stand ready to help in anything we can do as one of your newest businesses downtown to help us address that issue. Does anybody need any further information or questions?
I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I'm gonna ask you to introduce the rest of the members.
Okay.
See, I see Ms. Jolie there. Haven't seen her in a long time.
This, these are representatives of the Board of Directors. The Board President, Karen Rich; Jolie Ferguson, a board member; Michelle Norris, who's really our facilities guru for getting the building open downtown;
Okay.
And Becky Supersinski, who was a former teacher and on our board as an educator.
Well, great. I'm sure Mr. Frost will champion that cause as he has before, and we'll definitely be looking at some alternatives to try to help with that situation.
All right.
And we agree, we're glad downtown's that busy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Okay, Steve Crane.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, and Mr. Willard, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to speak in support of Medicaid expansion. While this is, you know, the opportunity for Texas to partake in the billions of dollars that could potentially come to the state to provide medical services to the indigent, for some reason it seems to be an issue in Texas. And for that reason, I'm here to ask the city council to support a resolution to encourage the state to participate in Medicaid expansion. And the reason that I'm doing that is because in the line of business that I'm in, which is helping people get their social security disability started, the biggest issue that they face is access to medical care. Now, I'm not asking for this because I want an opportunity to show people that are disabled. That's not my point. My point is, a lot of these people would be working if they could get health care. You know, it'd be great if I could put myself out of business, you know, because it would be a much better community. But this is, this is, you know, not only will billions of dollars be coming to Texas, it's morally something that we should do as a nation to make sure that everybody has equal access to health care. And expanding Medicaid provides that opportunity for Texas. It's a no-brainer for me. I don't understand why the state of Texas isn't doing that. Now, as a city councilperson and as a council as a body, if you were to pass a resolution to support Medicaid expansion, perhaps that would encourage our legislators and our governor to do the same. This is not a radical idea. I mean, it's something that the Chamber of Commerce has already done. They've passed a resolution encouraging the city council and the chamber, and the county to pass a resolution to pass along to the state to encourage folks to, to encourage us to go ahead and accept Medicaid expansion and fully implement it. So it's not a radical idea. And the other thing is, is that we have Good Shepherd Medical Center, Longview Regional Medical Center, Community Health Corps, Wellness Point, and Special Health Resources of Texas, all of whom are in the business of providing health care to the indigent, but they can't do it. They're turning away people all the time, and those folks are going to the emergency room, primarily Good Shepherd Medical Center, to try and get that treatment, the most expensive treatment that there is in town. That's what's driving our health care costs up. That's what's driving the insurance costs up. You know, the whole idea behind Medicaid expansion is, let's get people access to health care so they can get the primary care that they need to keep bronchitis, for example, from turning into ammonia and causing them to need health care in the hospital. So I would encourage each one of you to look at this issue, not only from a fiscal standpoint, what it means to us in the community in terms of dollars, but from a moral standpoint and how that affects the people that you won't see, ever see here, but the people that I see all the time at Highway 80 or at Newgate Mission or just on the streets. So I appreciate you allowing me the time, and I look forward to hearing what your response is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crane. Okay, presentation items. Item A, to consider a proclamation designated May 19th through the 25th as National EMS Week. Chief Stillman. Chief Hester. On behalf of Chief Stillman.
Yes, sir.
Am I close now?
All the way up. All right.
I'm kidding, y'all get up here. I'm just kidding. Y'all come up here. Where I'm from, they don't grow Cajun people very tall.
They don't?
No. Okay, so it's EMS Week, May 19th through the 20th. Of course, we did have Shaquille O'Neal. Okay. EMS Week, May 19th through the 25th, 2013. Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service with the members of emergency medical service teams ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. So the FOI, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2013, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Longview. And any of you that have unfortunately had to use our EMS services, I'm here to say that they're the best in the state, do a great job, and we thank you all very much, Chief. Thanks, guys. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay, we have one other item. Mr. Willie Marshall. And Kimberly Adams. Come up here, please. How y'all night?
Spot.
Night, and I appreciate that pretty blue, uh, blue bag y'all brought us. All right. Complete with a water cup, water bottle, pencil, and a potato chip clip. That's what Mary Ann said. You did. Drinking Water Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2013. Water is our most valuable natural resource, and if you don't believe it, go look today what a barrel of water costs versus a barrel of oil. Water's more expensive. Only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. We are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which generations depend. Each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution to practice water conservation and to get involved in local water issues. So therefore, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2013, as Drinking Water Week in Longview. Mr. Will. And, and, and I'm, I'm serious about the cost of water today and, and including the processes of making the water drinkable and whatnot. Longview is very blessed to have three excellent sources of water for the next forty to fifty years, so it sets us apart from many other areas of the state and the country for that fact, but many times, Longview's received the highest awards for the quality of our drinking water. So you guys in the water department do a great job. We appreciate you all. Thank you. Okay, the next presentation to Lieutenant Ron Buckner, Police Department, for thirty years of service, Chief Don Dingler. Sidney was trying to get me to read your, uh...
You're welcome, too.
No, no, you do a great job.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council, Mr. Willard. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our police department employees, Lieutenant Buckner, if you'd step up. Give you a little information about Lieutenant Buckner. He began his career with the Longview Police Department in 1982 after graduating from Stephen F. Austin State University with a Bachelor of Science degree. During his career, Lieutenant Buckner has been assigned to several different units, including patrol, criminal investigations, as a member of the repeat offender units and including the street crimes unit, and also an agent assigned to the county organized drug enforcement unit. Lieutenant Buckner was promoted to sergeant in 2001 and served as a patrol supervisor on the midnight and day shift, and in 2004, he became the supervisor of the school resource unit. In 2005, he was promoted to lieutenant and currently serves as the lieutenant over the first watch in patrol. Lieutenant Buckner was named Supervisor of the Year in 2005, and in 2008, Lieutenant Buckner received a meritorious conduct award for his work with the police department's Blue Santa program. Lieutenant Buckner is a graduate of the 238th Session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. And congratulations to you, Lieutenant, on your thirty years of service to the city.
Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
Consent agenda items. Councilors, any item on a consent agenda that you'd like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Have a motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is a public hearing to receive citizen input on a substantial amendment of fiscal year 2011, 2012. Martell Armstrong, Housing and Community Development Manager. How's it going?
Mr. Armstrong couldn't be here tonight. Parker Harrison's gonna fill in for him.
Okay, that's great. Y'all gonna let us know that ahead of time?
Yeah, she, that's my fault. Ms. Hill told me.
It is your fault.
Yeah, it's my fault.
Okay, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry. Will you introduce yourself?
My name is Parker Harrison, Community Development Administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Here to just receive any public comments for the public hearing.
Okay, this item does require a public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. Does council have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
I had spoke yesterday with, I had spoke yesterday with Mr. Ewing, and we were talking about a previous program we had discussed on where the city would actually be a landlord and go into the rental business, but understand now that the program has been changed where we would be building units, a couple of units to sell, and I just wanted to, uh...
Yes, sir. This is not a rental program. This is a home-buying program. This is for affordable homes being built, not affordable housing.
Okay. Approximately, how many homes are you thinking about?
We were wanting to start with three homes. After that, the money that we generate from selling those homes, we'll be able to utilize that with additional future funding to do more.
Would this be in any way a competition with, say, Habitat for Humanity or something like that?
No, sir. We've spoken to Habitat, and their clientele is more from the thirty percent to fifty percent median income. We're looking at trying to help those at eighty percent to sixty percent.
Okay.
Or fifty percent, so...
All right, so it's a different...
We're actually trying to work together to help more people.
That's a good program.
Yes.
Good idea.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? This item does for public, excuse me, does require a public hearing. I do not have any public hearing cards. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and glad to meet you. Okay, items of community interest. Caught you at a loss of words, huh?
I'm at a loss for words.
There you go.
So I'll pass to my esteemed...
The Longview Par Office will conduct a child identification on May 14th at the Longview Library. Time is from six o'clock to eight o'clock that night. Parents, bring your children to this event.
Okay, good job. Ms. Cash?
Just want to remind everybody to continue to pray for those families in West Texas. We seem to have so many tragedies that just keep happening across the country. Today, though, when I was watching the dedication of the George W. Bush Library in Dallas, it was amazing to see five presidents and their spouses together in decency. And in talking about just things that are happening, Governor Bush reminded me that as elected officials, we have a responsibility to a true calling higher than ourselves. And I leave you with that today, and I ask you, as you pray for those people in West Texas, be conscious that it is going to require federal intervention for us to help our brothers and sisters there to pick up the pieces and move forward. And as that elected official, I agree and side with George Bush when he says we are called to higher causes than ourselves. Thank you.
Good job, Cash. Mr. Frost? Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Question or comment first? A comment on the form that we all receive in our water bills, the Longview, publication of City of Longview, City News, who puts that out? Or who, do we print it in-house?
Sean.
Sean, do we print it in-house? Okay, but do you, or tell us a little bit about how, I mean, it's a very good bulletin. It's a lot of informative information. Would you tell us a little bit about how...
Sure, we put it together in-house, but then it's printed actually by the mail distributor in this case. So the person who, who processes all of our water bills actually does the printing on that one.
Okay, well, I find a lot of good information, particularly like your breakdown between the different districts and the maps and stuff this year or this, on this issue that recently came out in April. Just like to say thank you for a good job.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, then one question.
You only get one.
Maybe.
All right, no, what else you got?
What did we do? It came up today at a luncheon meeting. What did we do a while back on this narcotic, this drug called K-2?
K-2?
Yes.
You know, Sidney, we last year, or Chief Dingler, year before last, we banned K-2 substance at the time from being sold to city limits of Longview. Okay, since that time, two things have happened. One, the, the smart people that sell that moved outside the city limits.
Okay?
So now they're in North Longview, now they're in extreme Southern Longview, and, and so they, they've just moved across. I've spoken to Judge Stout. Judge Stout has also, as I understand, spoke with other members of the East Texas Workforce Commission, which are primarily judges from other fourteen counties, about trying to ban it in its entire region, so it's, it's a big program. The second thing is, is they reformulated, okay? I mean, what it is, I understand it's a form of incense, Chief? It's in, and so now the legislature's trying to address it, but really, it ought to come from, from the federal government as a safety issue for our kids. It is literally, we had a kid die in this area just recently, within the last couple weeks, you know, OD'd on K-2, okay? When, when we first were introduced and told about it at council, if I'm not mistaken, some person had gotten high on that stuff and was running down the street with no clothes on and dove through somebody's, you know, somebody's picture window at their house, okay? And was, it was injured at that time. So at the last meeting, I appealed to the public. I've had a number of parents call me and talk to me about it, and what is it that we can do? But this is a very serious problem, and, and it's, and it's not only killing, but it is really damaging, you know, these young people in a severe way. The, the side effects of this stuff is incredible, and I hope that we can get a more proactive and stronger program, but we gotta partner with the federal government and the state government, because we can do things here locally and then just jump outside the city limits. Or they go and get the formula changed, okay? So what was banned now no longer works because it's a different formula. So it's a, and, and there, there's a place just north of town on Gilmore Road, and, and you can sit over there and watch, you know, who's coming in and out of there, and they're just outside the city limits, and it's gotta stop, okay?
Can it be classified as an illegal drug?
Well...
Like heroin and all that kind of stuff?
Chief, can you, can you maybe come up and I, I tell you why you're coming up here. When Chief McCalib was here, he brought a bag of that stuff, remember? And passed it around here. I'd never seen, seen that. I mean, it's a, like a plastic, leafy-looking...
And it's, it's even sold as incense, meth salts, things such as that. K-2 is just kind of a, a name that covers a broad amount of, of different chemicals, and as you said, they keep changing the formula. So the, the formula that we put in the ordinance doesn't cover the one that, that they're trying to sell now, and if we passed another ordinance, they would change the formula again. Now, the state legislature, as you said, has a bill that has been introduced which will address those changes of the formula, so hopefully that will pass. But what it is, is it's not made for human consumption. It says on it it's not made for human consumption, but obviously people do that. And it, it is a serious problem, and we address it the way that we can as far as legally we can, we can address it.
From what I understand, from what Chief McCalib told us, is that it's a derivative of marijuana, cannabis, something or another.
The first formula was...
Right, the original, and then they, then they mixed it with some kind of chemicals and whatnot to form the incense, and these people, you know, they, they roll it and smoke it, okay? So is there anything, I mean, we can do?
I think right now, the best thing for us to do is see what the legislature's gonna do, because I believe that that's really going to help if it passes.
Well, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but I'm gonna hope.
Okay.
What about, are we, what do we see in, are y'all seeing locally, our, our police department? Are you finding businesses that are selling this new formulated product?
Yes, sir. We have businesses that do sell the formula that's not illegal. We purchased some of it, we have it tested, and the tests come back saying that it's not in the, the formula that is illegal, and so there's really nothing that we can do with those businesses.
Is there, is there anything that, that we could do from an artist's standpoint that, that put more of a generic name to what we're banning rather than we focused on this specific name, but it's a K-2 or K-2 equivalent product that we could ban that might, would give y'all more leeway?
It's possible.
I, I'd like to ask staff, city attorney, to maybe look into the classification such that, you know, we, it would give the police department, you know, more ability to ban those K-2-like substances or whatever, whatever need to say.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
I think that would be... Council?
In any form.
Yeah.
Well, stated in any form.
I mean, yes, ma'am?
I think that's a great idea. I'm just wondering, because Chief was just saying that the tests come back and show that it's not illegal. So could we, do we have that type of...
Well, it's not, it's not illegal if they, if used as is recommended, okay? But the reality is, the people that are getting really, really hurt by this aren't using it in a legal fashion.
Right.
So if there was something we could do from an artist's standpoint to ban that type of substance...
We do it.
Then, you know, it would eliminate it or give the police department some more enforcement capabilities to get that stuff out of our city, you know? So maybe we should, should look into that, and hopefully the state will do something, but there again...
Might talk to the state and see what guidelines they're using in there.
And we, we have that. I mean, we have what the, what the state's doing. Anyway, thank you, Chief. Thank you. Yes, sir.
While we're talking about this, I read where, they would call it, they call it "the challenge," where they take a spoonful of cinnamon and challenge you to swallow it.
To swallow it?
Yeah, dry cinnamon, and it says it creates, protects somebody got respiratory problem and everything, it could kill you. If we have anything like that... If we have anything like that going on? Have you heard of it?
It was on Good Morning America a couple of days ago, yes.
Really?
And it's affecting young people.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Anyway, it's, I know that there's a number of mothers and fathers right here locally that are suffering extremely hard with their children that have gotten really messed up on this stuff. And it just kills their heart and soul, I mean, so anyway, anything we can do. Okay. We are canceling the May 9th city council meeting. We will be having a special meeting on Thursday, May 16th, at 5:30 PM to canvass the election results and swear in, swear in Mr. Manley, Mr. Allen. Really? Oh, our only regular city council meeting will be, in May, will be held on May 23rd at 5:30 PM. Also, do your civic duty and vote Saturday, May 11th. Early voting begins on Monday, April 29th, 2013. Voters from District 5 and 6 will elect council members. Voters from all districts will decide three propositions. And for more information about that, please visit longviewtexas.gov. Alley Fest will be held in downtown Longview, May 10th through the 12th. The event includes alley art, music fest, alley run, kids fest, car show, and more. For more information, go to alleyfest.org. Our Longview Parks and Recreation Department will host a Hershey Track Meet on Saturday, May 18th. Registration is free for boys and girls age 9 to 14. But the deadline to sign up is May 10th. So for more information, go to longviewtexas.gov. And finally, I want to compliment our Longview Fire Department and the people that went over to West as part of standing guard at, I guess, at the memorial and at the services for those firemen and firefighters and rescue people that lost their lives. And it makes you real proud, as a citizen of Longview, to see the quality of people that we have here that will take their time to go represent, you know, not only the citizens of Longview, but the Longview Fire Department. And Chief, I want you to know, we appreciate that. And that's one thing about the Fire Department, they are a brotherhood. They stand shoulder to shoulder, good times and bad times, but it seems like most time it's in the bad times. So please pass along to those members, we sure appreciate this service. At this time, we're going to make my computer come back on, and we're going to go to executive session, deliberation regarding real property under Texas Government Code, Section 55.1.072, consideration of the purchase and value of real property located in the AR Johnson survey the city of Longview. We will not be returning for any action. Meeting is adjourned to executive session.